Good morning Commissioners, this is the public hearing of January 6th, 2015. Chair Shree Navasan here. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Washington.
Commissioners, we're going to start with item number one, which is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, 70 Willow Street, in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, docket number 165466, block 224, lot 16. Greek Revival-style residence constructed in 1839. Application is to replace front doors and ironwork, remove sills, strip paint, alter the side and rear facades, excavate the rear yard, install a shed, pool, and paving.
Thanks.
Good morning Commissioners, happy to meet you. My name is Catherine Redd, I'm a preservation department staff. Good morning everyone else. We are reviewing the project at 70 Willow Street, which is located in the northern part of Brooklyn Heights. Just stand up there. I'm sorry. Again, it's just my...
No.
Thank you. Okay. Catherine Redd, Preservation Department Staff. The project is at 70 Willow Street, on the west side of Willow Street, here between Pineapple and Orange, in the northern part of Brooklyn Heights Historic District. You can see the building here, its side facade is visible, and the rear facade is also visible through the back part of lot number five, here from Columbia Heights, and it's partially visible from the south also, back part of this side facade. In the photo, you can see some original features remaining, the great facades, which have been painted from at least the 1880s, in accordance with a newspaper article from Brooklyn Eagle. The brownstone entrance surround, the stoop, which is here covered in plywood for protection, front facade, basement facade, which have been previously repaired with stucco, brownstone stucco. The side facade, you see a brownstone string course. There are three window openings, one is blocked up behind a hose reel, and the other ones are on lateral edges with brownstone lintels. You see the roof cornice, which is original, altered with enlarged windows, about 1950. And you see multi-light windows and window openings, which have been multi-light since about 1950 as well. The building also has some historic features, pre-1902, a pair of painted wood doors and reveals with carved ornament and carved molding, and an arch transom, you'll see a better picture of that later. Okay. 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 And the highlights of the proposed work, we're going to see in a second. See. Here are the earliest known photos of the facades, and we're going now to sheet 12. Here we go. Okay, so, highlights of the proposed work. Oops, I went farther than I thought. There we go, thank you. Is removing the painted finish from the brick, removing the historic bracketed sills from the parlor floor, you can see at this level. Replacing the historic paired wood doors, reveals, and transom with new single wood door, side lights, reveals, and transom. Replacing the historic ironwork with new ironwork and new repaired solidwood gates in the side yard. Installing luthberg wood shutters at the first and second story window openings. Now, we'll see the highlights of the side facade. Oops. Okay, we have changed the order in this presentation. See. Twenty-seven. There we go. Okay. Oh, it just goes farther. Removing painted brick also, painted finish from the brick also, installing rusticated brownstone stucco at the cellar story over the brick, and the brownstone lintels and the string course, installing luthberg wood shutters at the first, second, third story window openings, and the historic line windows, as well as in a previously blocked up attic window. Now, at the rear facade, we're going to see... Sorry, this clicker is sticky. It skips things too. Be careful. My goodness. All right. Well, we can look at this one because the sheets are, of course, funny. At the rear facade, also, proposal is to remove painted finish, installing, install a rusticated brownstone base, enlarging all the cellar and second story window openings in height by dropping the sills, and replacing the wood porch deck and stairs with a new rounded iron porch at the second story deck, installing new luthberg wood shutters at the first and third story window and door openings. And then there is... Okay, this is good. There's proposed excavation at the subcellar, about four feet, to match, to add floor space in the subcellar, as well as dropping the existing subcellar floor. And then in the rear yard, excavating about 10 feet, as you see here, to create an extension of the rear yard areaway, right here, and to create a sunken garden and a pool. And then, going to plan now, let me... Here we go. Okay. And then in the rear yard, there's a proposal to construct a brick wall around the yard, around the perimeter of the yard, and extending from the rear corner of the house here, down toward the south border, and then around the pool. That's... Those are the highlights. Now, I'll introduce Patrick Chikoni, who's here as a consultant, and then Dick Boris will speak his opening.
Can we go back to you?
You can. We can go back with a split or two numbers.
Can you just go back to me more? Hi. My name is Patrick W. Chikoni. I'm a preservationist and co-author with the late Charles Lockwood of Bricks and Brownstone, which is the classic history of New York townhouses, serving as a historic consultant on this project to lead the presentation, along with the designers Dick Boris and James Sheeran, along with Beverly Campbell to the right, and the owner of the house, Christina Hauser, is also present here. The presentation is divided into three sections, we'll try to move through it quickly. The first is just a summary of the history that we've already seen. The second is a presentation of the design in detail, and then finally, at the end, I'm going to present by Dick. Finally, at the end, I'm going to return to speak on the appropriateness of the proposed design. Seventy Willow Street, shown in the center image, it's three-story, four-bay, 40-foot-wide Greek Revival house located on 50 by 100 foot lot between Orange and Pineapple Street in Brooklyn Heights. Detailed block plan is included in your book. Please note that 70 Willow Street is the folded rectangle here, and we'll move to the 1855 Paris map of Brooklyn, which is the first fire insurance map, the first map where the house appears and where the story begins. This is the house right here. Seventy Willow Street was completed in 1839. The date is from Clay Lampasters on Brooklyn Heights, and built for Adrian Van Cender, prominent member of Brooklyn's, one of Brooklyn's colonial Dutch families, and a major figure in the financial architectural development of Brooklyn in the 1820s and 1830s. Van Cender, according to one 19th-century history of Brooklyn, was one of the first in the city to create buildings of, quote, "higher architectural pretensions and beauty" that gave Brooklyn a more elegant and credible appearance. Van Cenderen built a wooden house with a stable in 1828, which is visible here, and a decade later built the brick 70 Willow Street here, which is shown as 58 Willow Street in the map. That's 1839. No information survives about the architect or the master builder who designed or constructed the house, but, given the large site and lack of neighbors, along with Van Cenderen's wealth and social prominence, it's safe to assume that the house was not a speculatively-built development, I'm sorry, a speculatively-built house, but a unique one-off design. But, must be emphasized, the unique design of the era was nevertheless composed of classical elements whose forms were copied nearly directly from pattern books, or composed of stock or architectural elements from Manhattan suppliers, including ironwork and mantis. We'll come back to this in the design section. And also, please note that there's no wooden porch visible at the rear of the house, as there is here on the frame house. This condition is also... Let's see, clicker. There's also no wooden porch shown in the 1898 Hyde Atlas, and you can see that the yellow indicates rear wooden T-porchers on the rest of the house, so this shows that there was no porch on the rear of the house throughout the 19th century. The first indication of porch on the rear of the house is in the 1904 sandborne, indicated by this dotted line, as a one-story structure. It takes various forms through the 20th century, including a two-story, a half, a two-bay-wide two-story section here, and it's currently, the current porch is a one-story porch that was a in-kind replacement of the tier eight wooden porch, which dates from the last several years. And also note on the last sandborne that this stair tower was present from 1929 and later demolished in 1994, circa 1994. Now, the earliest known photograph of the house is from 1902, which is about 63 years after its completion and after several exterior alterations. You'll note that the Greek Revival doors have been replaced with Architonic doors, more clearly visible on the 1922 photograph at right here. The original stoop railings, new ironwork and fence have also been replaced, though the original brownstone stoop pedestals are retained here. Also note the bracketed window shelves on the parlor floor, and the one-over-one windows with rectangular tracer, it's hard to see up there, but you can see more clearly in the book. The house, these, the house was purchased in 1886 and owned by the same owner for the next 60 years. Think that many of these changes occurred in that, around then, but it's not quite clear of the date. But, what should be noted and we'll return to is that this is sort of a piecemeal adaptation, not a wholesale rethinking of the house. The house retains its exterior appearance through much of the 20th century, shown on the left in the famous Bernice Abbott photograph, and then on right in 1954, one year after noted Broadway set designer Oliver Smith purchased the house. You'll note that the windows at the top have been lengthened in the entablature, and the divided light windows have replaced the one-over-ones. The house appears largely the same in 65 and 78, and now we come to the present-day view of the house as we've seen. To the left, the three-story row of the Tonic brownstones, to the right is the 11-story Jehovah's Witness tower. The current yellow finish dates from around 1995, when the LPC issued a permit to repaint the house. Owner at the time stripped the majority of the existing finish, leaving only a single layer of contemporary paint on most of the elevations of the house, and as Catherine mentioned, the house is also visible from Pineapple Street, though barely, you can see the side elevation, and even more obscurely from Columbia Heights, which is the west elevation or rear of the house here. With that, I'll turn it over to Dick to present the proposed design, and then I'm going to speak briefly at the end about the appropriateness.
Hello. My name is Dick Boris, and I'm the architect director for the project. The additional members of the design team are my partner James Sheeran, Robert Summend Associates, structural engineers, GZA Geo-Environmental, Geotechnical Engineers, and Quincy Hammond, landscape architects. I will now present the architectural scope of our project. Our design intent is to restore the existing Greek Revival details of the exterior, replace stylistically inconsistent later changes with period-appropriate Greek Revival elements, and a classically-inspired rear porch, unifying the three visible contiguous elevations. The next series of images, you will be shown, side-by-side existing and proposed designs for east, south, and west elevations. Photographic design inspirations, photos of the existing conditions, our designs with restored and demolished, and completing with the rendering of the proposed elevation, which will also be shown on boards at the end of the presentation. Here you'll see the existing proposed east or front elevation of the house facing Willow We intend to restore the following elements: the original wooden entablature, the face brick, by removing the late 20th-century paint, the mostly intact brownstone door surround here through refining existing profiles, molding profiles, the rusticated stone base, and lastly, ancient wooden shutters with rabbitted edges and operable louvers will be reintroduced here and on the remaining two elevations of the house. We propose a removal of the following later additions. The Italianate-French doors are Italianate-French doors and transom here, they're not arch doors actually, there's a round transom above them, replaced by a single-panel front door side lights and transom here. The late 19th-century ironwork, shown here, and the first floor window ledges, seen here. Here we're looking at a high-resolution photograph in 1922, which shows original Greek Revival elements that have been subsequently altered but remain fairly intact. Through our research, we found that these elements correspond almost verbatim to designs found in the 1833 Menardre Fever pattern book, The Modern Builder's Guide. In this series of images, you'll see the existing condition of the entablature on the left, the details from the 1922 photograph here, and then our design proposal for the entablature restoration at the right here. These images show the existing condition of the entablature. Paint analysis reveals that the first paint layer found in the wood is a dark reddish-brown, quote, "sanded" paint, considered the original finish by the paint conservator, Chikwansky. It was a common practice in the mid-19th century to finish wood elements to emulate stone, thus the sanded sand added to the paint. Note the dyke molding, number 204 here, and the handrail here, added somewhere in the 1990s, you assume, clearly unsuccessful DIYI restoration of the entablature. And here you see the photo of the existing entry door and ironwork on the left and our proposed design on the right. The preponderance of existing Greek Revival elements and proportions on the facade of the house, and the house as a whole, actually, warrants removal of the three physically intact yet, in our opinion, unsympathetic later additions, keep here. Meaning, we'll remove the late 19th-century ironwork, Italian doors, and window ledges, and replace them with appropriate Greek Revival ironwork, entry door assembly, and simple Greek Revival brownstone window sills. Please note that the owner will salvage and make these elements available for donation, they will not be destroyed. Here you see the refined door surround, here, we've worked on those moldings. And the side light, single-panel entry door, side lights and transom, the cast iron torcher and nules, here. Tapered door pedestals here, which are remaining and intact, and the Anthemian crested fence with the Greek key skirting, here. These are the existing proposals for front door sections. We can review these later if you'd like, but they're in your booklet for your review. And these photos show our front door side light transom inspirations. They are Greek Revival details found in existing New York City landmark buildings from the first half of the 19th century. They reflect the era's strict adherence to the pattern books of their time. And here, on the right, is our proposed ironwork at the front stoop, which is inspired by the torcher and nules found here, found here at 416 West 20th Street or Fishman Row, shown here on the left, circa 1839, in the same year that Van Cenderen House was built. We engaged talent architectural metals to cast and reproduce these for us. We feel comfortable proposing this torcher design for our door stoop pedestals due to the prevalence of this type of decorative metal that once existed here in New York City. Here you'll see this element here, here, and then again here, is the exact same piece, which shows that, obviously, the catalog to be used for this metal selection. These are the early 20th century photos of surviving Greek Revival ironwork and townhouses, sadly, of most of which is lost, except here, the upper right, in the Fishman Row townhouse. Our proposed fences are unemployed, as commonly found in many Greek Revival townhouses. For example, you'll find a 1934 half-drawing on the left of H. Washington Square North, and our fence proposal here on the right, which is reproduction of the existing ironwork that Gen found at Fishman Row. These are the existing condition photos of the front areaway. On the left you see the detail of the first floor Italian window ledges. These are added in late 19th century, and are not an original Greek Revival feature. The existing Greek Revival door and side lights here, which will be restored, and the existing window girls here on the right, which are to remain as well. We will restore the picked and banded rustication here, see the blow-up in the 1922 photograph, see the banding here. And here is our proposal on the right. We are replacing the non-historical metal driveway gate with a hand-woven gate painted black to match the new shutter. Here are sections of the existing proposed double-hung windows, which we finalize at staff level. And finally, a colored rendering of the entire final elevation, showing the components just presented. We will paint the entablature here to match the color found in the first paint layer. See how the harmony and balance is returned through the facade restoring the Greek Revival elements, their color, and their finishments. These are the existing and proposed side or south elevations of the house, the existing brick and window openings, here and here, will receive new shutter that will be shown in the closed position. Note that we will be removing the later brick boiler chimney here, condition in the, we don't know when we're going to turn the century, further allowing the brick to be able to return to its original beauty and symmetry, as you see here. Sorry. Here are the photos showing the existing conditions at the side of the house, here on the right. And you'll see the boiler chimney added later here. Actually, there are only two windows here at the bottom that we propose to cover up. And finally, we reached, oh, and here is the rendering of the proposed design on the south elevation. And finally, we reached the rear of the west elevation of the house. Our primary concern here is to create function and circulation to and from the driveway, kitchen, and rear yard. The proposed solution is a classically-inspired two-level semi-circular cast-iron porch, here, and flanking stairways coming down here, that will lead down from the first floor to a paved terrace here at the cellar level. The design entails removal of the existing wooden porch and deck, lengthening the second floor windows, here, and bringing the rusticated base around from the facade to this level, as the west cellar wall will now be fully exposed. These are the existing wooden porch on the rear of the house, dated from 2011, when it was replaced in kind to dilapidated version of the porch, which in various guises was present from the turn of the 20th century. We will replace the paper, the tar-paper sheathing at the attic story, here, with horizontal matched wood boards painted black, and the existing leaking skylight here on the right will be replaced by a slightly larger round skylight with a lower profile. These are the second floor window openings that we've lowered and replaced with Greek Revival French doors and transoms, again, after the fever. We're not widening the opening, just lowering the second floor opening, and you can also already see that one of the openings has been lowered here, you're getting here in detail on the right. These are the three images of existing additions at the cellar, at the cellar level areaway in the rear of the house. And here's a rendering here. These are three, oh, these are neoclassical porch designs that we use as a basis for our design. Here, they're, this is in New York City here, contemporary, and this is obviously those who know Gramercy Park on the west side of the park. And here's a rendering of our design for the west elevation, showing the new cast-iron porch, the stairways, and casement windows, and French doors with transoms. This perspective sketch illustrates the shape and configuration of the two-level porch, the two stairways that lead down from the first floor, kitchen and dining room, to the lower level. This is the east-west section of the house, looking south. Again, as Catherine pointed out, this is the area of excavation here. Note on this excavation, 10 feet will be backfilled, as you'll see in the next slide of the planting, as you see here. And here are the sections of the new brick wall at various locations around the perimeter of the rear yard. We can review this later if you'd like. And now, images 41 through 49 show the existing and proposed floor plans, I'll go through these quite quickly. Here are the existing subcellar, this portion of the subcellar is not yet excavated, we propose that to be excavated along with the rest of the subcellar. Existing cellar plan, here, the little areaway in the back. The proposed cellar plan, widening the area in the back, and two levels of garden, had new driveway paving here. The existing first floor plan, here, the porch to be removed. The proposed first floor plan, again, the same plan, our idea of the porch and flanking stairs. Second floor plan, porch here, deck, new proposed here. Third floor attic, a roof plan. And now, I agree with Patrick Chikoni for the closing statement about the historical appropriateness. Thank you.
Brooklyn Heights was the first New York City Historic District designated in 1965, 50 years ago. The designation report, as you know, identifies the qualities of the entire district without containing the detailed architectural histories by property of later districts. Indeed, the Brooklyn Heights Historic designation was a test case for the Landmarks Law, regulating an entire district composed not of individual monuments. These are the words of Otis Pratt-Pierceall, "When instead of dense group, quote, 'dense groupings of homogenous structures which retain in high degree the integrity of their original architecture, which together form a collective emanation,'" in quote, "a quality distinguishes historic districts from landmarks." This quality has led the Landmarks Commission to favor the preservation of 19th century and early 20th century alterations to residential buildings, since the Brooklyn Heights Historic District is correctly viewed as an accumulation of changes over time, whose character as a whole stems from this architectural layer. Yet even within a diverse historic district like Brooklyn Heights, there are especially significant buildings that would merit consideration and designation as standalone monuments. The Van Cenderen House at 70 Willow Street is one such building, and its individual significance as a rare four-bay-wide Greek Revival mansion should be considered foremost when weighing the appropriateness of the changes before it. The Van Cenderen House was completed in 1839, was among a handful of early 19th century New York houses, whose owners could afford the grandeur of a house that was almost twice the width of a typical row house, here 40 feet wide on a 50-foot-wide lot, and four bays wide rather than the typical three bays. The set of surviving individually-commissioned large houses from this era, left standing across the city, is vanishingly small, and the Van Cenderen House at 70 Willow Street is one of the few such mansions built during the Greek Revival era, that, barring a handful of changes over time, survives recognizably intact today. There are two other surviving brick-funded four-bay houses in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, shown in the slide, 70 Hick Street at center and 90 State Street on the right. These houses, as rare as they are, illustrate the extremely distinguished nature of 70 Willow Street by comparison. One 70 Hick Street, though recognizable to base as a Greek Revival, as Greek Revival in style, later gained two additional stories in the reimagining of the house as a large flat building. It's up here, this giant later cornice. 90 State Street, though largely intact, blends into rows similar, though narrow and squandered, Greek Revival Italian houses to the left and right, which are sort of visible here. By contrast, 70 Willow Street, as the fire insurance map we saw earlier makes clear, was cited that the three elevations were visible, not just the Willow Street elevation alone, making it legible as a nearly freestanding house, quality it retains today, especially with scabbled roof profile and flanking chimneys, which sort of disappear into the background, chimneys are right there. Indeed, this new freestanding quality is highlighted by the destruction of the neighboring 19th century houses immediately to the north. Near the 11-story residential tower to the right dwarf 70 Willow Street, there's a small hyphen of empty space, as you will hear, that serves to highlight the house's standalone composition. The house's true peers among four-bay-wide Greek Revival mansions are not in Brooklyn Heights, however, but in Manhattan, both located on West 22nd Street, in the Chelsea Historic District. There are the Edwin Forrest House at the left, 436 West 22nd Street, built in 1835, and here captured in hab documentation from the '30s, and later sadly mutilated, and the Tucker House at 337 West 22nd Street, constructed in 1836, right. The Forrest House, apart from the early 20th century balconies and French windows at the top, gives an idea of the elegant and austere simplicity of the four-bay-wide Greek Revival design, including intact door, door, and ironwork at the base, readable as unified composition. The Tucker House, by contrast, has been transformed into an Italian mansion in such a comprehensive fashion that its original Greek Revival identity has been effectively obscured. Here it would be clearly inappropriate to reverse these alterations, because the house's significance lies in this very transformation. This is not the case at 70 Willow Street, where the house's Greek Revival character remains largely intact, and where the later alterations on the primary elevations, specifically the door, the ironwork, and the projecting shell, meaning the parlor floor windows, can be read as less than sympathetic alterations to the Greek Revival fabric. Though these alterations occurred in the late 19th century, and might charitably be forgiven as contributing to the accretion of character to the house over time, they are nevertheless jarring, since the rest of the Greek Revival elements remain present, even if masked by paint and other minor changes. And unlike row speculatively-built row houses, where one can read the changes to the original houses, identical original houses, from the variety of transformations on constituent members of the row, 70 Willow Street has no such immediate context. Though this renovation is largely an aesthetic decision, not a materials one, it should be emphasized that the balance of the proposed work is the restoration of existing fabric, not alterations. Moreover, the proposed alterations to restore the integrity of the Greek Revival character of the house are all based on the solid documentation of either existing Greek Revival townhouses in New York, early 20th century photographs of New York townhouses that have since been demolished. demolished, and the 1830s patterns book of New York architect Menorah LaFevere mentioned earlier, and in the book there's some side by side pictures of the builder's guide and the existing entablature. These spores is point to the special nature of the house in the context of the era's architecture, as I mentioned in history. Though the evidence suggests that the house was commissioned individually by Adrian Van Cinderin, its design was nevertheless composed from familiar and repeated stock elements. Thus, it is logical and appropriate to design the door and ironwork based on these examples. They were and are, in rare surviving examples, found of Greek Revival houses in effectively identical forms across the city. The design for the rear of the house, by contrast, is a modern classical design based on historic presence. It's not a conjectural period design, as the house never had a porch in the 19th century, but instead to give the rear of the house functional and aesthetic appearance in the most simple man, manner possible. This speaks to the design as a whole, both outside and inside. Though historic district interiors are not under the purview of the Landmarks Commission, we know that too many buildings in historic districts across the city are viewed by owners as protected facades, inside of which sits the tabula rasa of an empty box. The Greek Revival renovation of 70 Willow Street takes decidedly the opposite approach, one which chides together the intact Greek Revival details of the interior with the exterior design proposed before it today. The design taken as a whole is thus completely appropriate, given the clear historic significance of the Van Cinderin House's Greek Revival design and extreme rarity as a four bay individually commissioned house from this era. And finally, to return to the words of the 1965 Brooklyn Heights Designation Report, also by Otis Pratt, written by Otis Pratt Pierceall, or the, these words are far from Otis Pratt Pierceall. The Brooklyn Heights Historic District quote, eminent, quote, emanates an appearance and even more a spirit and character of old New York. This renovation will preserve and enhance this spirit and character, both for the house and the entire Brooklyn Heights Historic District. And with that, turn over your questions. Should note that, have the endorsement letters been distributed? So before you also have, besides the book, there are three letters of endorsement. One is from Pi Gardner, the executive director of the Merchants House Museum. Second is from Thomas Gordon Smith, the dean of University of Notre Dame Architecture, Architecture School. And the final, somewhat more sentimental one, is from the fifth great, great grandson or great, 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 great grandson of the original builder of the house. So with that, turn over your questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant? Yes, Michael?
The intent is to, I mean, you're not restoring the architectural integrity, you're replicating the architectural integrity. If the intent is to recreate a Greek Revival facade, why are the freeze windows remaining the anomaly?
Believe me, we would love to change them, but because of light in air, the deal we cannot.
Skylight.
Pardon?
Skylight?
On the front of the house?
Would it be visible?
Yeah, it would be visible. So that, if we try that.
I just-
Also, the children's bedrooms, the client obviously wants them to have windows so they can see out of it, if light in air.
All right, other questions, Roberta?
Well, in terms of the door and the front of the building, is it, are you saying that you were changing, you understand that it's not, it wasn't original, and so therefore you think that you're changing it to something better than what is there now? Is that your-
Yes, more or less. We're basing it on extant examples. We're not, there's no conjecture here what a Greek Revival four eight three would look like. We're basing it on extant examples. Actually, the exact same door occurs around the street on Cranberry Street. That was a, that was a choice that we made, so there was no conjecture. We wanted to replicate things that we knew exactly existed in 1839 in New York City.
Okay, but now we just talked about the windows at the top, which-
Which is the building golden out was-
Right, right, but I'm saying, I guess what I'm trying to say is I think that the doors and the front of the building, I mean, the entrance through the metalwork that's there, it could be argued is more appropriate, even though it's not the original, but it's more appropriate because it is, it does have some time having been there. And that it, you can't really prove that the other door is, I don't know how you could put that, is a better door in terms of aesthetics or in terms of history.
There in line is the roof. So, but the thing, we actually stepped back in itself, thinking we'd originally saved those doors. You step back and realize this is, this is a freestanding object. The three, there are three elements, the door, the window ledges, and the ironwork that keep it from being completely beside those windows and this weird addition at the top, which again we cannot take out because it's a room. It, it, it's just a missed opportunity in our eyes. There were no other Greek Revival houses restored in the city. The one that you used in the LPC book, the Bushman Row House, they're only holding on. Those scepters, there used to be two more scepters, maybe five years ago, they're gone. They've never been replaced. We've gone by the house and there's bits and pieces of the fence gone and so forth, no shutters. So we're, we're kind of screaming for this to be allowed to go back. There, there's nothing else in the city that exists.
Are shutters consistent with Greek Revival?
There are pencils on the back.
And on the front.
And, no, they're all hung off, they're on the photographs.
Inches and pencils and in the original, and many Greek Revival houses did have them. So we have the forensic example that we had them here. And it was kind of a personal choice. Some, some houses had or didn't have-
And they appeared and disappeared over time. I think there's probably stone in this one or whatever, and put back on it all.
That's why you see them sometimes close, sometimes not.
But are they consistent with Greek Revival, so I'm asking? Yes, are they?
They were taken off the front because of the window ledges that were really, probably had balustrades on them, they were taken off.
Yeah, there are pencils here for the shutters, and when these window, 19th century Italianate window ledges went in, the shutters were taken off because actually the window ledges once had balustrades on them. So it's, it's a domino effect. Every, you know, the, the more you, you know, take off, the more you have to take off, and then certain things come in that actually make the other things harder to go back to. So it ends up in this half, half, halfway.
Yes, Michael?
We're on that same line here. You, you made the choice to change, to keep the windows in the, the gridded design as opposed to the one that seems to be supported by the historic photos of the one over one with the, I forget what you used to-
Well, can I clean in?
Yeah, your, 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 your feeling is that those were not original and that those were, yeah, they were almost certainly changed way 19th century.
But this is, this is, again, we're down to reiterating the same point over and over, is that respect the idea that for many, if not the majority, of cases from the historic district, that the accretion of changes over time is something to be preserved. In this case, the special significance of the house, both within the district, but really in the context of surviving historic houses in New York City, makes a slightly different case, especially because the transformation wasn't wholesale, as you saw with, with the Tucker House in the district, that these were sort of, in some ways, they weren't, they, they changed the character, but not overwhelmingly. And in some cases, you know, was, you know, they did not change the, the corners as many other houses do, or even the windows, window surrounds and stuff like that.
We're, we're glad that the buttons are kind of lazy, actually. They did the whole house.
Okay, thank you. And, yes, Roberta?
Just about the rear.
Sure.
So the porch on, if you just explain like how-
The elevation?
Um, maybe the elevation, the elevation. So it's a new porch.
Yes.
Um, so this is, so this particular porch, the details of the materials were chosen because what? This is a Greek Revival porch somewhere?
This is our interpretation of a Greek Revival porch. It, it fits the function. It, we came up with this shape actually because here there's a gate that connects with the Revival. The other porch blocked all those windows, very dark, you know, it's very kind of dark dingy in there. So we brought it in from the sides to bring the structure of the porch away from the side lots, which is always encouraged, and also open up these windows here into the first floor. And then we, it's a amalgamation of, of different parts. Again, we're, we're working with Allen Architectural Metals right now, like various pieces to need code and also to be Greek Revival.
And it's dropped, so it's-
It's, it's, this is existing, this part here is dropped now, and those, at the extending that drop part here, about 10 feet.
All right, so this is a area here-
It's already at that level?
Pushing out of it.
It's already existing, we're just pushing it out. And then there's a lawn here, the terrace here, and then the driveway.
So, so it's a missing drop, so what's at the, at the back of the yard?
Well, the, the rest of the garden has been lowered at various levels. Right adjacent to the house, the level was already there, we've just pushed it out.
This level existed, we extended it here, five steps up to the lawn, the plantings, the pool area here, small pool, stepping up to the driveway, kind of stuff. It's various, it's various, various levels.
But what is the, the existing grade on, where's that? No, I mean, the, the regular yard?
It was in three or four different levels. It was about here, this grade of the lawn.
So you said in the earlier picture that this is going to be excavated by 10 feet, but it's not actually being excavated, is it?
It's being excavated to build back up. It has to be by planting.
Oh.
We're taking it down to build it back up, to give it a base.
I see, but, but that's all earth and it's not, there's no, there's no space under-
No, no, it's okay.
The back and forth shows it clearly, so.
There's no space under there, it's all back built.
I see.
With, um, so.
Okay. Uh, yes, Michael?
I'm not going to let you off on the roof. I can't recall any 19th century membrane roofs. What's the deal?
No, we, we've gone back and forth on that. We, we actually were thinking about doing a later proposal to do a standing seam roof.
How about slate?
Or possibly, you know-
One of the maps says, the association shows it's either slate or, or copper. It could be either. I think I'd rather do it with copper because of the smoke is very low. I'd do a standing seam metal roof.
Thank you.
If I could, I'd have to step back and go home, the roof, so it'll be darker.
All right, any other questions for now?
Just one, one question. The, the current, the existing door and the, and the ironwork that's existing right now, those are in good condition, bad condition?
Um, some of the railing is rotten as it meets the house and portions of the fence here. Um, the door has been sandblasted unfortunately. The, the analysis found deep impregnations of sand. The carving, you know, is fairly three dimensional, so it survived, but it was really kind of worn down.
And you said about the, that the building was originally painted in the 1800, in late 1800s?
So it was on, the paint analysis shows a thick accumulation of dirt.
Before the first-
Before the first coat, indicating that it was unpainted. And this is the typical exterior finish of a Greek Revival house, which we haven't shown to detail, but it's, it is very plain or with very tight mortar lines. In all likelihood, the, the original house was unpainted. The first layer of the paint is from probably the 1880s, when there's a Brooklyn Eagle article calling it a white brick house. The first coat in the paint analysis was a lime wash. So we think that that's when it was painted white. And then at some point, though it's hard to tell color from black and white photographs, that the yellow is from the early 20th century.
Is it presperate with pencil joints?
Yes.
So in the end it will be, there, there won't be paint.
A beautiful, classic, you know, Greek Revival, already orange brick house with the tight lines.
But you add it stucco somewhere.
Stucco, no, well, although we're restoring the rusticated base, which today is just, you know, smooth plaster like the walls here with a pencil mark. The original stucco was actually nicer than most, original brownstone, banded and what's called picked, almost like pot marks and then banding. It was quite luxurious. And that we, we saw in the 1920 photograph.
Is you replicating?
That's what you're bringing back.
Yeah.
And I was just asked to clarify the levels in the backyard. Sorry. Here, the excavation, the, the existing backyard here, the new backyard is actually lowered, the buck screen has to be lowered, average, it's going to have to be lower than the existing to, to the west, Columbia Heights. There are two properties back there. Actually, one 11th Columbia Street, um, Street is excavating as well, and they're actually matching our height. It'll be the same height on both sides of that, that one, 11th Columbia. So half the property will be equal, and then the, the north half of the property-
Can you just show us that in plan? Because I know your plan shows various levels.
And, and Commissioner, is that, it's actually coming forward to public hearing soon. It hasn't been approved yet.
This is, this is a-
That's coming forward to public hearing soon, in, probably next month.
Sorry.
The, the, the reference that you're making to an adjacent house hasn't come to you yet.
Hasn't come to you yet. So that's this property here. That property for this amount of space will be exactly equal here over portion of 111th and the next property to the, the north. This is about three feet lower than this grid.
So what is the elevation of the, the largest part of the rear yard versus edge or?
We, we don't have it.
Here we do.
No, I mean like even minus five feet, three feet versus two feet.
A, A is to the, the north, to, to, to this building. D, B is here, that's the, the biggest difference here. C, C, we're showing the existing and then the proposed is down here. Put this portion here. D, D, this is, again, this amount, and then E, E is slightly lower.
So what, uh, the lowest is four feet six, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's somewhere between two feet and four feet six.
So the existing on that drawing is your yard, or is it the neighbor's yard?
Existing is the neighbor. 70 Willow is to the left, 820 seconds.
Thank you. We'll take testimony.
Should we put up the boards?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Christabel Goff? Yes.
Christabel Goff of the Society for the Architecture of the City. If this were in fact a clear restoration, it would not be here. It would have been handled at staff level. It is hard to understand, for me at least, why anyone would feel the need to strip the front of the house of its historic ironwork and replace it with copies of different ironwork from a variety of alien sources in Manhattan. Why must real Brooklyn go into the dumpster, although we now hear it's going to be saved and given away, to make way for copies of Chelsea and Habs drawings of Washington Square? And given this concern for documenting the authenticity of these misplaced choices, the explanation of precedence for those totally bizarre colonettes and gratings proposed for the new ironwork back porch, I do not see anything similar in gramercy. I don't, I don't know what they're talking about with that. Is it really necessary to trash the charming front door and its surrounds because it was done a little later than the first period of the house and strip off the domestically useful ledges for window boxes? This is a lived in old house with a long history, turning into an academic exercise in stylistic purity, but it is a textbook kind of purity with no heart. It is also a matter of grant that the 50s apparently are regarded as cat's feet here. The removal of the porch in the materials available last Wednesday was justified by dating into 1950. We are now hearing that it was rebuilt again. Obviously, it is not the same shabby, wisteria draped porch where Oliver Smith and Truman Capote drank their martinis. Smith moved to Brooklyn to live at the famous Mid-Au Street Rooming House with W. H. Auden, Carson McCullers, Jane and Paul Bowles, Richard Wright, Benjamin Britton, Gypsy Rose Lee, and others. Then he moved around the corner to this house where he spent his life restoring, while designing Broadway sets for West Side Story and Rhyfey Lady and ballet sets for Agnes de Mille and Leonide Massim. Truman Capote's basement apartment is to be demolished in the excavation. Sick transit. Brooklyn Heights did have an intellectual life at one time.
Thank you. Judy Stanton?